All right, I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Village Board for December 10. The time is now 6:36. If you'll rise with me for the Pludge of Allegiance.
Pludge of Allegiance.
... in the United States of America, and history of politics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
Holston.
President.
Hor.
Here.
Pop.
Here.
And Mr. Resick is...
Here we have, okay. Well, in lieu of the invocation, we just say Merry Christmas to everyone. At this time, we'll go to open to the public, agenda items normally, please limit your comments to three minutes. Come to the podium, give your name and address, please. Okay. Next item we have is the consent agenda. I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Holston and Hor. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Hor.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
And Gonzalez.
Yes.
Of course, your fore.
Your Honor, just pretty much what it states consolidated election packets are required to be submitted between December 15th and December 32nd before by P.O.
All right, under the mayor's agenda, we have four items. First one, who's in your packet, says pertaining to the establishing of the position of Community Resource Parks and Recreation Director. There should have been a job description in there as well, I believe, was the, was the meat of the...
Little H3.
My sorry, where? H...
Yeah, I think with the changes, it was...
Still H.
H3.
I entertain a motion to approve the ordinance establishing the position of Community Resource Parks and Recreation Director.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. Any discussion made?
Sure. First, Gonzalez and Pop. Pop, ordinance number, please.
That'll be 1705.
Yes, Mr. Pop.
Am I correct that this individual was first in... There you go, seventy-three years old. You forgive what you've got there.
Well, there, this is not, this is not specifically an individual, this is an ordinance establishing a position.
Oh, we're not hiring the person yet.
Give me a couple minutes.
So, after discussion, we may hire a person?
After, if there's an ordinance allowing for the position, then we can discuss filling that position.
Is that what this is?
Yes.
That's what I'm asking. Okay, so the question is, in light...
Division.
She first in grants.
Uh, yes.
That's what I understood, okay. That's all I would ask.
Additional questions?
Yes, sir.
No offense to you, sir, but I have a hard time having more than one person that I report to. Does it make sense to have this person reporting to both the mayor and the village administrator?
That's the way the other positions have been defined in the past, and I think that's partly because we're not a managerial form of government, and therefore, it's, it would primarily be the administrator, but in the absence of an administrator...
Everybody understands that who the boss is around here, but I don't mean that in any way of bad.
I'm still trying to figure it out.
As, yeah, as mayor, you, of course, are in charge.
Well, but just for clarification on the job definition and all that, I think that's the reason why it stays that way.
Okay.
Or is it a fair assumption?
But all jobs, basically, in those...
No, the top, top management jobs would be like that. You'll notice the next one does not stipulate that one.
All right, and this person, as I understand the job description, also has some HR responsibility?
There will be some of that, really.
Okay, and will that be defined further in the job description or is this very well left to be opened?
Actually, Ruben, I know you were very involved in that. Do you want to share?
At this point, there's been an assessment of everyone's job duties, and once we have everybody in place by the first of the year, then the job duties will then be given to, to the staff. So, it's properly managed, and there's not one necessary office or department that's being overlooked than another. So, each, each phase of the office is being careful watching managers. So, at this point, it's been an assessment of job responsibilities, job duties for all the staff members, and then what's appropriate for department heads, then will be given at that point.
So, the intention is for this to be a department head?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the individuals that they would supervise oftentimes will be part-time, seasonal, in some cases volunteer, depends on the type of the...
Sure.
Maybe intern work or things like that, that they'd have to be responsible for as well. You don't have any plans of any full-timers answering to that individual this time? All right, this ordinance, 1705, with no further discussion. Go for a roll call, please.
Trustee Holston.
Yes.
Hor.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
And Gray.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance establishing the position of Executive Assistant in Human Resources within the Public Works Department.
Did I make a motion, sir?
I am.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Holston and Gonzalez.
This one is 1706.
Discussion?
Yes, please.
Along the same line, this particular position, the job description itself does say Executive Assistant slash Human Resources.
Correct.
Village of Long Lake.
Correct. One of the things that we've observed is, as our town grows, as the departments have the need for things, we've had situations in the past where if you only had one HR person that was, say, based out of the village hall, you would be in a little bit of a shortfall at times, based on the different departments, police, public works, things like that. So, there would actually be, by design, there would be, the police and public works would actually have their own HR person that would be dealing with all the multitude of things going on there, but then they would collaborate with each other. So, in the event, let's say that the public works HR person, the point of accountability back there is not available off whatever else, there could be some fault tolerance of sorts with, say, a laser or police department or something of that sort, because they all have to follow the same protocol and procedures.
Yeah, my, my concern here, and I should have brought up on the last one as well, is nowhere in the job description does it ask for them to have any qualifications or, or if they're going to give that responsibility.
There is going to be a central clearinghouse here at the village hall. So, the administrator and, and to an assistant administrator person, those duties will be over, will oversee the respective offices, police department, and the public works departments. But for the day-to-day operations, if there's an injury, if there's work that's kind of academic to be completed, the assistant, executive assistant, from that perspective, or respective of a department, then will handle the paperwork, but ultimately will return to the village and be overseen by the village, monitored by the village. But it just, to delegate and send a, some of the responsibilities out to, into the field to handle those day-to-day issues, is just, it's better time management, it's also communications, also growing our people, exposed to the training.
I understand that. I believe that's, that's the philosophy that's behind it, the word short said. We need help. Yes, no, I understand that. I just would, would have thought we would put some requirements in there for some, some HR training if they're not qualified or some background, in terms of the ideal candidate for future, this is something we could be using for future openings as well, correct?
Yes, and I think that what Mr. Batista was indicating, that that's more of a supportive area that would answer to front office, but it would be the white person in each of those two departments. So...
And, and just to make the board aware, the person that would be, hopefully...
Considered.
Considered for this position is currently, has undergone training, has been handed some of the responsibilities at this point already.
I, I understand that, but villages, people leave.
Sure.
New people come in. When that happens, you need a job description that you can use for that, with qualifications that would, when someone said, "Well, why didn't I get the job?" Well, that would say as Executive Assistant, Human Resources, but there's nothing in the qualification to say you have to have any kind of background in the individual.
Fair enough, fair enough. I think that with, with that suggestion, I think that there's no problem with adding that to the, do we need to add that to the ordinance itself or just simply the job description?
Not as opposed to...
Correct. Well, I, relative to the ordinance, I'm okay with that, but the job description, I would suggest that maybe not look at...
Fair enough, fair enough. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, I believe, on that one.
You move it by Holston, so that it's good to us.
All right. Roll call, please.
Trustee Hor.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
And Holston.
Yes.
Um, next on the agenda is appointment of Community Resource Parks and Recreation Director. I am making the recommendation of Mary Jo Vincent for the position of Community Resource Parks and Recreation Director. I will just give a very brief summary. She has, for the last several years, she actually used to work for the village here, in a part-time capacity, doing a very fragmented portion of those responsibilities. She left on very good terms. She went to another community where they expanded her skill set while she was there, and frankly, it became quite a drive for her, and she is looking, she lives here in town, and she is looking to invest in our community directly as a contributing factor in that. So, she's got a wealth of experience that fits perfectly with this need that we have, and at that point, I'd just simply have to approve, I guess it's by the consent approval board. Larry, how do I, is that?
You would, you hereby would like to appoint Ms. Vincent to the position with the advice that you can send to the board of trustees.
Okay. What do you say?
Second.
Why couldn't I have that one swore me in too, right? Yeah, what do you say? Gonzalez and Gray? And, roll call, please.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I know Mary Jo, and very, think very highly of her. I think it's a good choice. I have no issue with the choice at all. My question would be relative to how we appoint people, how we bring people on the payroll with the village, and whether we post jobs or whether we just decide on our own how we're going to do that, and how we do it today, and how we do it tomorrow, and how we do it in the future. Over the last couple of years, I've seen a number of people appointed. I've seen other cases where we posted jobs and went through the process. What makes the determination here? And if we want to be upfront with everybody, we want to be transparent, how do we do that with the vote?
Yeah, I think that, a couple of things kind of play. I know Ruben had met with this individual and reviewed previous resumes and applications that have been submitted to the village over the last year, and it, I believe it is posted on our website as well. Typically, Larry helped me out on this, but I believe any of the upper management are, are typically by appointment, by recommendation of the mayor.
Sure.
And I think that's just traditionally the way it's done in the U.S. of Illinois.
If it's supervisory or management position, it's the mayor's call.
Oh, sure.
With the advice of the consent of the board. You might implement a practice in the near future to, if you're the board dean of local, the mayor obviously, to post it outside in the newspaper, but in this situation, it's proper to appoint an individual with the advice of consent of the board.
Peter.
I would just like to actually point out that, I'm sorry, her name again?
Mary Jo.
Mary Jo. Took a pay cut to come to us. She had a nice, a nice gig over in Payless, and she did come to us less than what she was getting off Payless. I just want to put that out there, that it's, we're not, we're getting somebody that's very experienced for a less price.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so...
So... That being the case, do I have a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Yeah, Trustee Gonzalez moved and Gray seconded.
Okay.
Trustee Pop.
Yes.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
And Hor.
Yes.
Thank you. The next item, appointment of Executive Assistant in Human Resources within the Public Works Department. Jill Donati has, again, was hired on part-time in Public Works to assist in this area. It didn't take too long before the part-time evolved, because of the constant need. We all know how much DJ's overworked back there, and one's probably not enough, but that's all we're asking for today. The reality is, Jill's proven herself in that department already as a part-timer, and we're merely asking for her to have some added responsibilities and make it a full-time position officially. And so, Larry, help me with the wording on that again.
Hereby would like to recommend...
Jill Donati.
Jill Donati's position of Executive Assistant.
Human Resources within Public Works.
Public Works Department, subject to the advice that you consider the board of trustees.
Yeah, what he said.
I'll, I'll move that.
I'll second that.
Hor and Pop. Okay. Any discussion on this?
I hate to be the one saying that. Is this budgeted?
Okay.
Just one other thing, too, on both of these, as I'm looking at both of the job descriptions, Ruben, you and I talked earlier about it, and both of them say that they're both salary exempt possessions.
Correct.
So ineligible for overtime. Okay.
Okay.
Both lower.
Okay. But it's just different than the way you kind of ordered it to me earlier, that's all.
I'm sure I'm right.
Yeah, I'm just making sure that I'm reading this right, okay?
Correct. Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Hor.
Yes.
And Pop.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Batista.
Okay, first is the resolution request. The board, we recall, back in August, in regards to the Egyptian Trail project, Armsworth Group had assessed prior data from a previous engineering firm, and after their assessment with the data, it became apparent that it was, some serious issues had to be addressed and became of concern. At that time, came before the board and requested an additional $8,800 for, for funding to pay for this amended cost. At that time, the board had decided to use MFT funds to pay for the additional costs. In order to move forward with now this, this amended cost, we would make a request for Board X in the form of a resolution to pay for these amended engineering costs, would be $8,800.
I'll make that motion.
Hold on. I'll second.
Pop and Hor. Discussion? Roll call, please.
That'll be Resolution 2014-12.
Dash what?
12.
Trustee Gonzalez.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Holston.
Yes.
Hor.
Yes.
Pop.
Yes.
Before proceeding to the next item, I just wanted to ask Joe McKenna if he could, just for a brief moment, just to give an update on the project we just, this week met with IDOT.
That'd be great.
Yeah, just figured, with, with, we attended the FHWA meeting to review the project scope, as you guys kind of saw from the open house, as far as what was proposed for geometrics, the intersections, and how we're moving forward. So, kind of just wanting to give you guys an update on how that meeting went, and how we'll be moving forward from here. It did go very well. There were very minor comments from them. They were all in favor of the roundabout idea of the intersection, perfect opportunity for that. A lot of things they look at is more globally, as far as how things tie in, traffic counts, to make sure they agree with all of those items. So, that's a meeting. Typically, if there are any issues or hang-ups or additional questions they have, they bring those up at that meeting. So, it went really well. There was really nothing, some minor stuff, design items to address. So, with their approval essentially at that meeting, now the phase we move into is finalizing all the reports that go, for the Phase 1 report to get approved. So, what we're going to do here in the next week or two is get all of that to a point where it's a pre-final version. We'll submit that to the village, as well as Will County, since they have buy-in of the project at Manhattan Long Road, and also with IDOT, which was included in the schedule we originally proposed. So, we're going to get that done by the end of December, get that submitted. The goal is to get those comments back by the end of February. We're hopeful, based on schedules with IDOT, that we can get that January, even expedite that schedule a little more. So, once we get those comments back, then we can finalize the reports that are required for Phase 1, and then we actually submit that for final approval. So, that would conclude getting through this Phase 1 approval to get, you know, kind of the bigger picture of what we're doing here with this project. The next upcoming thing, certainly to keep this on track and, and move the project along, when we go into the Phase 2 engineering and design, that's where the village would be using 80% of federal funds. So, those agreements, instead of just being approved locally, need to go down to Springfield to get approved, and that can take some time, up to two, three months, depending on their backlog. So, what we're going to work to do concurrently with that report is kind of put together scope and cost, and what those Phase 2 design services would be, get that in front of the village in January, and then we'd be looking, I think we had it in there in the first meeting of February, looking to get that approved, with the goal to get that in line in their queue down at Springfield, to get that clock going, so that we're not just sitting here with approval meeting and agreement to get approved. So, that's kind of where we're at, and we're moving. So, you'll see that information coming up here in December and January, and then give you guys a chance to comment on any of that, and get that approved through February, and move that along. So, if there's any questions, we'd certainly be happy to answer them.
Questions for Mr. McKenna?
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Good to Joe.
The one thing that we brought, did bring back, that Joe mentioned, was the catchword is roundabouts. They love roundabouts up there, so that's good. Okay, as the board recalls, on December 3rd, we had a special meeting in Robinson, presented GIS mapping. There were a few layers that were presented in this proposal, the utilities for Public Works, and economic development. There's a management system, and it showed a total cost for the whole proposal was $111,025. With this, just to make the board aware, for this project, we have already figured out the funding to pay for this, so we may have to come out of our general revenue fund. The proposal, if you have your form in front of you, I believe it's Form I-3, and that proposal, utility layers, total $55,000. The, this total cost would come out of the water department, it's already in the budget.
Ruben, are we switching I-2 and I-3?
I'm sorry, yes, yes. I'm sorry, we'll put off in there, 2 and 3. Economic development is 100% TIP eligible, that's $34,000. And for the implementation of the cartograph, asset management software, part of that will come out of water, which is the judo GPS device, and then out of economic development for the other two, for the software and the asset management implementation.
Economic development budget, not TIP, right?
Correct.
TIP eligible, but out of economic development?
Correct.
If it's TIP eligible, it should come out of TIP.
I'm sorry?
The, the, the portion that is TIP eligible should come directly out of TIP.
Correct, this is partial.
The $34,000. And then there is a, we have a budget line, I haven't...
Just, just to clarify, I think, because I think...
It's two separate things.
It is, but it's partly because there's economic development that does take place outside of the TIP district and sales.
Yeah.
And that's the reason why it has to be legally separated out.
So, the software is... But the rest of it is not? And then?
Yeah, approximately what you said, 36% is what we indicated?
Correct.
Of, of the total amount was directly TIP eligible?
Yes.
And the balance of that was going to come out of the water department, which already has a budget for that?
Yes.
And, and the portion that's not water-related, and it's economic development-related, will come directly out of that?
Correct.
Okay. That's not TIP eligible. First, we hit the TIP district, then we hit the water department, then we hit...
Water department, and then we hit...
Okay.
African development, yes.
So, you said 36% is TIP eligible?
Correct.
Total.
Water levels?
Of the total. No, I believe...
111?
Yeah, 111, and all the rest of it.
If I may, I know obviously it's over $20,000, but the village's board has the right, in a situation like this, to bypass the bid process on basically three technicalities. One, the board always has the right to bypass bids if two-thirds of the board feels appropriate. Two, it's professional services. Professional services are architectural, engineering, accounting, legal.
Legal?
For me? A lunch. And then three...
Who knows?
Three would be...
Larry, you got rid of that one.
Three would be, it's, it's a specialty item. So, I, I think the boards, in my opinion, say, if you want to bypass the process, I think you have the right to do so. As long as two-thirds of the board suggests, I think you're fine. You're, I know it's over $20,000, but in situations like this, against professional, I'm not sure if proprietary with Robinson Engineering, but they put a lot of work into it. There's, I don't think every engineering firm has this type of capability, so I think it would be more inappropriate if the board wanted to, to award this contract to Robinson and set him out. But you need two motions, one, one to bypass the bid process, then that motion passes, then a motion to execute the proposal from Robinson, and the amount that described, right?
We currently do some business with Robinson, correct?
Yes, sir.
Do we, of the other engineering firms that we use, have any of them expressed any interest in GIS? Or presented GIS to us?
Greg, that's Mr. Batista.
In the past, we had other engineers that could not handle it that we used before. We have not. This has been an old, an old bolt that we've worked out before. We added the, and that's why we couldn't give you full totals last year. As it's, as specialty, Robinson's kind of known throughout, is having premium software, as you saw in the presentation, ease of operation. So, based on that data and multiple phone calls to other municipalities who use their GIS, they were the preferred choice for us to implement their software. So, I have done background on Robinson a couple of years ago. When I looked into this, obviously, it was... When I looked into this, obviously it was a different administration, different time, but I've been working on this for several years, and got, uh, Mr. Matisse involved in it, and, uh, he, uh, he did his due diligence as well, and came up with the same assessment. So that's why we're going with this as well, and that recommendation.
I moved, we bypassed the bid process.
A second hand. Further discussion?
Absolutely.
May I ask, Darryl, as a trustee, I sit here and, with, a lot of things are going on, a lot of money being spent. Are our funds in good order, even with this happening?
Yes.
And I, and I implicitly trust your judgment, that's what we heard you for, and you're doing a great job, by the way. I, I don't see you losing any air, your airlines are saying, but anyway, we're, we're in good shape.
We are, yeah. Thank you.
Extremely good?
The answer, no, don't put extremely good. Extremely good.
I, I'm sorry, I have one question. Since Barnesworth, uh, Mr. McKenna is, I'm gonna put you on the spot, is this something you guys have dealt with in the past, or?
We've done GIS, but it's more on a national level. I mean, I know Robinson's done a lot of that. Locally in there, yeah. And we certainly have the capability, but, yeah.
You guys have done in that, the bigger scope?
I'd say the, ours is not more of a local community, and it's more of a national statewide thing for companies that have, um, assets that expand the nation, so it's more of a bigger, bigger scale type of programs that we've, we've done.
Want your opinion, how do you think so?
Uh, and I've dealt in the, in this area with, I think Robinson's done, and some of the committees I'm on elsewhere, and they, they have an act, you're right, they have an active reputation in the area. Uh, my question was more just asking if somebody else had shown any interest. I didn't think it was, but I wanted to clarify that.
No, that's.
And I certainly trust Darryl's, but I have checked the finances too, and look like to handle it.
Well, just like you, when we discussed, we just don't wanna...
Like, there's a big process.
Exactly, we don't wanna, you know, exactly.
And I just want, just so everybody's aware of this, after the last meeting, I think I asked a question about the engineering firms that we currently are using. DJ actually reminded me, there's a couple others. How many are we using currently, for one form or another of engineering?
Currently, five.
Barnesworth, Robinson, Tyson, Vanpage, Keston?
More, uh, strand for brief maintenance projects, and, uh, finishing up the project with factory rating.
Okay. So six, six would feel comfortable. All right. So we had a motion and a second. Roll call please.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
And Gonzalez?
Yes.
Now I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposal from Robinson, as presumed.
So what?
And, uh, just to clarify, Larry, help me out on this, I believe the wording also needs to stipulate, uh, with funds direct, TIP-eligible funds coming directly out of the, uh, trust, Darryl, to figure out which of the three TIP funds.
I'll just direct.
Yeah. Fine, there's one clarifying.
As presented by.
As presumed, that's fine.
Certainly.
So there's Holston and Pop? Roll call please.
Trustee Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
And Gray?
Yes.
Okay. Monsieur Matisse?
Okay, um, moving on to the next item, uh, for the funding, also on December third, in the presentation that Tyson, uh, presented before the Board, and the conditions of the roads in, uh, the Village, along with the estimated cost of other projects that are, are needing to be, uh, worked on, um, they provided us a breakdown, as, as the Board also requested a breakdown for our first-year projects, and our second and third-year projects, that would be taken from bonding only. So as we moved the TIP-eligible projects, and the MFT funding projects to the side, and just what would be taken out of the, the bond, as you see in your, your, uh, your form there, is for the first-year projections, there's the twenty projects that are listed, it would come to two-point-six million. With the streets, uh, that are listed, and then for years two and three, those projects would come to roughly, uh, three, three million dollars, well over three million. Tyson also provided, uh, a map, to give those.
Clarity, if you'd like to see it. Projects that can be completed in years two, uh, one, two, and three, based on a five-million-dollar bond, uh, split up in different, uh, different years, as you can see by color codes. You see Egyptian Trail on there, we have put funds to the side in this bond, to help do a temporary repair maintenance, as well as, uh, setting up, uh, aside some funds to be able to fund the reconstruction costs as well.
Now I know, uh, one of the questions that came up, uh, trustee Gray had asked about number one, resurfacing costs. And just for clarification for the Board, that ninety thousand would address, um, resurfacing, as you recall, last winter, Egyptian Trail was horrible, numerous complaints, puddles, had to be addressed, uh, with patching, periodic patching throughout the winter. Um, there's calling for, uh, a winter that's, as bad, if not worse than last year, so the projected cost to continue to repair, that's a rough estimate there, ninety thousand. Um, as Joe talked about earlier, we would not be able to get to the construction phase of Egyptian Trail until late twenty sixteen, for completion into twenty seventeen, so it's gonna be a while till that road is complete. So it will have to be addressed, there's gonna be issues with Egyptian Trail, unfortunately, but we are gonna address that problem. So the total cost for, uh, what we're looking at is quite point-seven million dollars. We're asking the Board, uh, consideration of a bond obligation at five million. Now there is a form.
DJ, if you could catch up to it.
Form, uh, Mr. Gavin had sent over to us, uh, a breakdown, um, for the bond, over a twenty-year period, what the breakdown would be, at five million. It would roughly come to about two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for the year. Uh, on a home that's assessed at a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. So for a home, estimate, uh, the breakdown would be about nineteen dollars and forty-two cents a month. If you broke it down to a week, it would come down to about four dollars and eighty-five cents for the week. So again, the cost over twenty, for the twenty-year bond, we're looking at about two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for a home assessed at one-seventy-five, and it comes to about nineteen dollars and forty-two cents a month.
And the bonus to this for the tax creators is we're gonna finally get our roads done. Hopefully.
Residential.
Residential roads, anyway.
Uh, I know we have at least one, but we have outstanding bonds now.
Yes.
That we're paying them. How many are there?
There's three.
There's three.
Darryl, if you wanna elaborate a little bit?
I'd like to know what that bonus per month, when they'll be paid up.
Yeah.
One of the bonds, just so everybody's aware, one of the bonds that we have is a two-thousand-and-ten bond, I believe it is, it is pertaining, it is pertaining to the, um, TIP-three? TIP-two?
TIP-two.
TIP-two. Uh, we had to, Larry, you recall, we had to go up to bond to back the World Kitchen, uh, Development District.
Back in nineteen ninety-nine, when the Village first started in the TIP District, uh, when the TIP was not established, uh, most of the times, the bondholders will ask that there's a GO backing behind it. Uh, it gives them some security and collateral. Ever since nineteen ninety-nine, though, there's been enough TIP revenue to pay debt chips on those bonds. We've never had to levy the GO issue to pay debt to us. Um, the other bonds were general obligation bonds, for streets and improvements, I'm not sure if that's for residential, but it's for the other parts of Monique. This one, uh, as Tyson indicated, would be for not only residential, but for some other streets. But right now, as Mr. Gavin said, and Delina, uh, who came in, I believe in August, uh, from a credit standpoint, will use your check.
And then just to clarify too, with doing the, the funding, levying the bond and doing this five-million-dollar with the GO bond, still leaves us in good financial standing?
I believe, if we weren't Mr. Gavin, whatever. They, they're very upfront, they did their research beforehand. Uh, we are a whole rural government, so I think it's lost a referendum. Uh, five million, uh, is probably reasonable, but financially, I think it goes in good check.
Just to, um, hit a few things that, that we didn't mention earlier, is it's, it's been well over ten years since there has been any rural projects in the Village, in residential areas. Um, I believe it's somewhere in fifteen years. Court Street was the last?
Yeah, good evening, uh, Board again. As you may recall, the last roads that we resurfaced, and it was due to water main replacement during the I-fifty construction, where we actually had, uh, to re-improve Briar Lane and Elder Lane, because we put, uh, we put mains down and did some main improvements, and those are highly traveled roads. Before that, was about twelve years ago, where, when we redid Court Street, and I believe that was a portion of a bond that was used, as well, uh, in, in recollection, discussing that with the engineer then. Uh, I think we bonded for the new tower that we installed, as well as did the road improvement on Court Street, because that, they had a great bond rate back then for that. EPA loan trends have now since come down, so most of our EPA water stuff will come from that, but that was part of that process. So it's been a very long time, as you know, roads have deteriorated, uh, and that life really isn't expected to last that long. In-house, we do crack sealing, as they had discussed during this presentation, during the special board meeting. Uh, we do road patching, you know, as we've been touched on, Egyptian Trail fell apart, we know the roads are falling apart. Uh, this is our preemptive strike, as well as now that we've implemented a GIS mapping and software, to help put together that plan and implement that plan, so that every road is assessed, so that we can move forward past years two and three, and go, and go forward, to give a complete comprehensive plan to fix the roads, really quite frankly, so.
Now, uh, the two lanes, you beat me to those, 'cause I was gonna mention, if we did do those during the, uh, Route Fifty project, that came out of our pocket, correct?
Uh, it did, uh, if you recall, a lot of that, uh, I believe we had used some MFT dollars to pay for that.
Was our?
If memory serves.
When you take it out of our budget, uh, different funds?
Small sections, uh...
Do you recall how much money that was? For those two lanes?
You know, uh, right offhand, I don't. I believe that was, uh, bid with the water main installation that went down, uh, to dissect it. It had been sixty-seven. Elder was a smaller lane that was put in, it was between Court Street and Main Street, so it's a very small segment. We didn't go north, and, and it dead-ends south, they came to property. Uh, I believe that was right around seven. We did curb and gutter on one side, and I, I mean, it was really kind of hard, it was a full reconstruction during the water main.
Drain to the curb side, that's what you're just saying.
One curb side, drain, you know, it was a full reconstruction, based on it was a stone before, so I, I really would hate to put a number to it, because I don't have those total costs, uh, to that, but, but I wish, you know, I believe it was well over a hundred thousand, but don't quote me on it.
I would.
Just for that, just for that small segment. Um, sixty-two, sixty-seven keeps jumping out, but that might not be right. We had, if you recall, a, a main section, you were on the Board then, some of you were, uh, that had kept going bad, and kept having main breaks during that main installation, and we had to go to an emergency bypass the bid to get that small section of main installed, uh, underneath Main Street, and that may have been the sixty-seven, so, uh, really, that was right when the shift of power, and I took over that department, so I was kind of, uh, very green, you know, and just...
No pun intended.
No, no pun intended, yes.
Putting, putting a water main under and everything, I have to believe it's even more related than what you said, but, that being said, I just wanted to say that, that Darryl did indicate that, uh, we're in financial pretty good shape.
Uh, yes, sir, actually, uh, prior to any of this going down, we've had numerous finance meetings with Darryl to make sure that, upon implementing this, that we were, A, in good financial shape, uh, could pay it, and, as well as budget for these, for the proper years that we'd be using these funds for, and, and within. So we are, we are very good, uh, if Darryl can answer those questions to validate that, but yes. Before anything's been presented, it's, it's been budgeted for this fiscal year, uh, proposed that if we got a bond, to spend some of this projected amounts, I believe it was two-point-four, we have two-point-six, what we can do in year one, but obviously, in order, the reason why we're only asking for five million and not five-point-seven, is we're trying to realize the savings of getting these projects put together, bid out in wintertime, to where we can realize some ten-to-fifteen percent savings on these projects, to get them out early, so that these businesses that are looking for their summertime work, we will realize those savings, they can bid on them, they can get these projects out, and we'll in essence save, you know, a lump sum of that money. So we're very confident that we can get these road projects constructed in the next one to three years, based on that bond, and really change the face of it, uh, perception that the people have about the condition of our roads in that short time.
Well, there's no, no doubt in my mind, it's, it's a great economic development thing, too, to show what the town can really look like, but it just bothers me an awful lot that the tax people won't. And, uh, the fact that our funds are in decent shape. We were able to squeeze in Elder Lane and the other lane. I'd love to see us go with the first category, and then try to add to that with some of our funds available. So we're not, because, you know, it'd be a lot less money for the people.
Understood.
We can do all the roads right away, but, uh, the next year, we could possibly do some more out of our general funds.
Well, uh, trustee Pop, that's, that's a very good point, and based on those points there, uh, we don't get that much revenue to help fix the streets. Although we're in comfortable shape, but you are, you know, are gonna recall, Egyptian Trail, it's a big, you know, kind of a hit there. We had to come up with twenty percent of the cost of that road, which are estimated right now at about two-point-six.
Which we had to do for I-fifty, but we're gonna do a couple other roads.
Sure, and, uh, with those costs additional to help recoup our MFT costs, we use those MFT funds to help pay for roads and structures and improvements, and there won't be, it won't replenish quick enough for us to be able to realize what we need to do. It just, it doesn't, we don't get those tax dollars, that revenue into that fund. Uh, and you can check with Darryl today, and you can validate that. To ever realize, we'll be in the same condition, we will, we'll, we'll be playing catch-up, in my personal opinion, uh, with those funds. Obviously, this Board is more than authorized to do whatever they'd like, it will help, in whatever condition they would like, but I will, I will, as the department head who receives those calls about those roads, and the conditions of those roads, will probably wanna put the burden on you to pick out which roads you would like to do and not do, um, based on that, because, because, you know, really, everybody thinks that road is...
You picked out the two lanes, you picked out people.
Is personal, you know. Uh, obviously, those lanes were done because water main construction, but, but a lot of it has to do with just the completion and implementation of the road program, that'll help the rest of it, so.
I, I have to say, being, I don't mean to be the only one talking over there, but I had a couple things on my mind.
My voice is shot, go ahead, Joe.
Oh, good. I'll, I'll carry on. No, but, uh, I was on a high school board for a very, very long time, and we had basically two funds, you know, building, and, uh, basically education, but, where things could be transferred from one to the other. If it was a permanent part of the building, we could put something that's educational into the building fund, blah, blah, blah. So this way, I'm asking you, Larry, as, as our lawyer, can, is there any way we can use any of our other funds? Like, the corporate fund is probably our largest. Can those, any of those monies be used for roads?
I wouldn't recommend it.
You wouldn't recommend it?
No, I would not.
Okay.
What you might be able to do with Mr. Gavin's assistance, if you did issue five million dollars in bonds, and find out that we don't have to use all those funds, you can set up a scenario where you can refund some of those bonds prior to maturity. It's a little complicated, but they're well-reversed doing it, where, when we find out we don't need all the money, you can pay some of the money back, or up anyway. But it depends on bonds. But I wouldn't transfer funds like that.
These, these are capital projects.
Yes, I see.
These are not fix-it budgets, I mean, we don't have a half-a-million-dollar surplus in our budget this year, Darryl. And we're talking five million dollars that need to be spent over the next three years.
Yeah, three years.
We'll do every road, yes.
Well, this is not every road, these are just the ones that have to be done.
Yes.
But the road in front of my house is not getting done, and I know it needs to be done. But these are the ones that have to be done.
Room for miles is fine, by the way.
The, the, um, question I have is, is, you're asking for five million, which you're gonna spend year one, two-point-seven, approximately.
Correct.
And then I see you're indicating you're hoping to, to save some money. I do know, when we talk about the High Street, we've got three-hundred-and-fifty thousand... I do know, when we talk about the High Street, we've got three hundred and fifty thousand there to play with, so when we have that discussion, I'm going to talk about what we're going to do with that money.
Understood.
Because the infrastructures have to be done. You're right, they haven't done anything in years. Roads do need to be fixed, but as a taxpayer, I have to pay for it too every year for the next, how many years that I'm paying taxes. So I understand completely what Trustee Pop's concerned. But for years, the village has not taken responsibility for fixing the roads permanently. We just put a patch in it and think, Nick's winner will yell at you again. I agree with you. We've got to fix these roads, for sure. So it's, sooner or later, somebody has to make the tough decision that this has to be done, and we have to spend this money. We don't have surplus money to the tune of a hundred thousand, probably on this year's budget. Our entire budget is, how much did he give you, Daryl? General budget?
I'm sorry?
What's our entire, our entire budget?
I don't know. Nine million?
Nine million. And now, if each of you would take a huge faith, we could probably start off.
Totally.
But it wouldn't, it wouldn't come to a half a million. And, I mean, if it's not there, I understand. I don't like it, but I understand.
So you toss faith out and you walk away?
Yeah, I'm ready to give up the mic at that point.
It worked, Jim, you took it, you tell them.
Understood. I didn't see the nod that you were going to, you know, hold aside. Staying in the holiday spirit here. Okay, we'll be ready. Be a nice present for the residents.
So, I believe the board wants to proceed along with the mayor. You need authorization to execute an engagement letter engaging the services of Robert W. Baird to present a, for underwriting purposes, for a bond issued in actual SEC five million dollars. As he indicated, we take care between ninety to a hundred and twenty days. They have to do a lot of work ahead of time, but under SEC regulations, you need an engagement letter so he can, he can review our finances and make the proposals to the village board.
Does this require a public hearing?
No, sir. We're a home rule, so you don't need a referendum per se.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
No, it's all right.
Anything to stop us from having a.
This is a public.
Okay, this is considered a public.
This is actually kind of the second read, if you will, on this, because we had the here, the meeting, where it was exhaustively presented, if you will, this is for.
Yes, Trustee Pop, before, all we're doing tonight is authorizing Mr. Gavin to proceed with the financial analysis. Before we actually borrow the money, he will come in with bond ordinances and make a very thorough presentation to the village. But tonight, you're authorizing him to proceed with the analysis.
Okay.
But before he actually borrows that money, you'll sign the bond ordinance, indicating we are borrowing the money, we know it to debt services. So you still have, it's going to take him until the spring to get the bond ordinance completed.
Much more comfortable in my chair now, thank you.
And I just want to say that I don't think anyone on this board enjoys raising taxes. And I'm glad we don't enjoy that. And as we talk to our constituents in the community, and, you know, when they get their tax bill, some of us may, they say, well, why did you raise our taxes? And we can say, this is why. This is tangible, it has to be done. It's, it's on infrastructure. I think, I think it's a good choice to make at this point, at this time.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and we have some discussion. Rock on.
Trustee Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holstein?
Yes.
Next on the agenda, we have the officials' report. Number one, public works, Mr. Gray.
I did have a meeting with our superintendent last night, and the main talk that we did have, unfortunately, it is the season for water main breaks. We've already had three that they get on as soon as they can. So just please bear with them if they come knocking on your doors and we need to shut you guys down for a few hours. Again, as you hear the discussion tonight about the pipes and the old roads, it's, it will happen. So just please bear with them. They will try and get you guys up and running as soon as they can. And again, I do apologize. I had a couple of notes, and I don't know where I put them. So the main talk last night was the water main breaks. That's all I have. Thank you.
Can I just add to that?
No.
That's my reception. I'm sorry?
Right here, reception.
I've never seen one of your guys refuse or pass up working on that after hours. I know they get overtime, or they may not, but it's a rough job. It's cold, it's wet, it's dirty. And I attribute that to David's being the commander, and keeping his voice in line a little bit. Because it's very easy to say, no, I can't stay there. Okay? I haven't seen that since you met. And I just want to commend you for that.
Next on the agenda, parks and recreation. Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes, two little short things. This is the weekend of the Holiday Express on the thirteenth, Saturday, December thirteenth, in conjunction with Richmond Park, we'll be doing the Holiday Express rides again from Richmond Park train station downtown, and to see Santa, hot chocolate and things. There's two rides, ten thirty and one thirty, and there's a few tickets left of each one that can be purchased here at Village Hall for this Saturday, if you're interested. And a reminder too, that there are several drop-off locations throughout the town for the toy drive this year. Of course, right out here in the vestibule at Village Hall, also the Mitsubishi dealer, at Mulligan's, at Shoup's, and at Brian's. So for any, for boys or girls, small unused, unwrapped toys, can you please drop them off so we can make a good toy drive again this year? Do you want to add something?
Thank you very much. Finance, Trustee Horn?
Mr. Pop, I'm glad you were asking about our financial condition, because I do have the numbers here. To back up what he said, that we're in good, good financial shape. For the first seven months of the year, ending with November thirtieth, we are currently running within the budget for the corporate fund. The exception is the parks, Parks and Rec. We have a deficit of one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars, which I don't think is too bad. There's various other numbers here, but we are under budget in many of them, so that is good. Our revenue sources for our village, Daryl put together a chart for me. By far, the biggest source of our revenue is the real estate taxes. But it's also important to notice that we get a rebate on that, or a rebate, not a rebate, but we get one percent of the sales tax from the state, and that's our second biggest revenue source. We also have a home rule sales tax. It's a second or third, or fourth, and a local share of income tax. There's also hotel tax and telecommunications and video gaming, a lot of different resources for our revenue. So it's a, it's a very thorough report that he's given me. Also, there is a TIF review board meeting, which is set for December twenty-second at six-thirty. What day of the week is that, Daryl? You know?
Tuesday.
Is that a Tuesday? Okay. So that's Tuesday, the twenty-second. And then draft, I'm sorry, six-thirty on the twenty-second. Is that here, Daryl? Phil Trump?
I'm in on the phone.
It's just a, in the past, I don't, I don't know how effectively it's been discussed in the past. I know when I was a trustee, I never knew the meetings were going on. Actually, I don't know if I knew it, maybe it went on last year, but this besides the point. Trying to learn these things. Point is, is typically, it's a point of accountability for all the other taxing bodies that are affected by our TIF districts, as to provide open dialogue and disclosure of the TIF funds and how they're effectively being utilized. And so, that being the case, that's, that's when we address any concerns that either the taxing bodies may have. And I think typically, library districts, they want to show up. But she comes all the way in, so.
So that's all I have, but if you, if you have any further questions, you can direct them to myself or to Daryl. End of report.
Thank you. This is the dollar. Trustee Holstein?
Yeah, I'll give it to the park. We can just go ahead another time. Last week, I attended the Will County CED meeting, and they gave their annual report for the Will County budget. It takes time tonight, you go through it, there's things on the agenda. Pass that to the clerk, and he can include it in that. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. And let me just, you know, reinforce how important it is when there's things like that that are going on, to be aware of them and try to send some of these types of meetings to the various departments and the liaisons and all that kind of stuff, as relevant. You know, know about some of these things and find a way to be of good mutual support to the citizens. Number five is building, building services and code enforcement?
No report.
Okay. And public safety, Trustee Raisik is not here. Chief, do you have anything?
You want this to announce? Sure. Chief?
I, I think, go for number. I just want to remind everybody that when we have burglary to motor vehicle rashes, like we just had last night, where there was four, the principal reason that these happen is because people do not lock their cars. And if you lock, if you don't lock your car, and you leave valuables inside of it, like your wallet, or purse, or phone, or any of that kind of stuff, you're absolutely inviting crime directly into your vehicle. Now, I, we're going to take the report, we're going to investigate the crime, we're going to hopefully solve them. But in the grand scheme of things, if people would lock their doors, that would stop that from happening because these burglars that are doing this are not doing it to break windows, and they want to be very silent. And as long as your car is open or unlocked, they will look inside. Merry Christmas.
And some people I go from doing Christmas shopping in your car.
As much.
Thank you. Larry, with you, the whole roster full, thanks for yourselves.
Thank you, Mayor. Several items for board's consideration. The first item is an ordinance approving the issuance of variance for Janie Mohan, I believe her name is. She came to the.
There you go.
She was at the zoning board meeting, in the event, I believe. The board made a recommendation to approve the variance. I think there's a question whether she mailed all the notices to the appropriate addresses.
Yeah, let me just address that for a second. Couple of you have served on the P and Z board, you know how important it is that when there's a variance for special use, that proper notification be given according to statute guidelines, which is a hundred and fifty feet from any part of the property. And when it was observed that the list, like in your packet, you may have had the list here. EJ, I believe there is, how many more are there on there? Five?
I don't have my list in front of me on that, sir, but I believe it was roughly about five homes that were, were not included in that original, original request when it came through my desk before the P and Z meeting, and I surveyed the area just to review that.
And then just to clarify, when it was noticed, Deputy Clerk Powell contacted, tried to contact multiple times, the property owner. They, she did it in a timely manner in which they would have been able to correct, remedy the situation before the P and Z meeting, but it wasn't. So P and Z gave approval to go ahead and proceed, but, I mean, we've got to make sure that the rules that are being adhered to are consistent with the statutes and everything else. So I asked Larry what's, what do you deal with this, because you're going to have people that are going to, if you had ten addresses on there, they may not have come to complain or object or anything else, but it's in their right to do so. And if they're not being notified, they're the ones that are directly being affected by it. That's kind of a concern, and we need to make sure we're doing a better job of doing that. I know with this new GIS system, as one of the questions that ran up last week, but that'll make it easier for everybody to know exactly what parcels are affected. But I don't, I don't know the clarification on the law on that, Larry, but can we make a contingency here of some sort, so that?
Yes, sir. The board deems appropriate to pass an ordinance approving the issuance of variance for the applicant, subject to her providing proof that the individuals were not notified, are now notified, and they have no objection to the variance.
So kind of a compromise, I mean, the hearing was already had, so I don't know if there's any better way to deal with it.
Now, she might want to knock on their doors, indicate what they're, what she's intending to do, have them indicate they have no objection to it, and then that way, she's got her variance approval, but she's still going to provide proof that all the adjoining landowners were duly notified. She won't be able to put up a fence, obviously, I don't believe. But at least in this situation, everyone's getting an opportunity to do it. If they have a concern, they can voice their concern. That's probably reasonable.
Now, I've got two former P and Z members here, so David and Heidi, especially insight on this matter.
And I would, I would be okay with it too. Michelle, you know which property owner did not turn in their green cards or was not notified of the one that's on the list?
DJ has a list.
Yeah, you have a list?
I do have the list, Trustee. I just don't seem to have that list on me. That was during the P and Z, it's probably my.
Okay, I have the list of ones that were on her application, but you.
Right, I had additional, I apologize. Right next door, I know her east was not on that list, so that's what sparked my wow, an extra neighbor missing. So, you know, when I, when I surveyed the area and just validated the addresses when that came through before I even went to P and Z, Michelle did try to follow up to notify her that there's a few missing. There is just one concern that I had based upon that, and I'm not sure if one of the addresses that she shows on there that says resident has an occupant in there or not, so there's, there's another concern. And with that concern, that driveway where she wants to widen that fence, it has a blind. In essence, what that means is their driveway will back up along the width of that fence and have more of a blind as they're backing out of their driveway. What's unique to most of the parcels over there, if they have a variance that widen their fence closer to the sidewalk, there's no neighboring driveways coming out of those fence lines. This particular fence has a driveway where she wants to widen it. So based on the type of fence, if you can't see six foot high dog ear, however, that driveway is going to have a more skewed vision backing out as traffic comes up the road for them to get out. And it says resident, they didn't return a card, but between talking with Michelle, we're not sure if there's a resident there or if the proper notification was given to a forwarding address.
So my question is, if this, this listing of addresses is incomplete, how do they make it to P and Z?
I will not speak on P and Z's behalf. I was there for the P and Z meeting. The chair knew I was present, but did not call upon me for that concern, so.
And are they ready, and Dave, just interrupt me, are they ready to go to construction already? They're going to dig this, this winter?
That's unclear as far as that process, if they are going to try to construct or do it in the spring, they just know that they have everything in play before they put a deposit down or on the fence or anything like that.
And there again, just.
That being said, that I would be comfortable entailing this until it's properly.
My thinking as a former chair of P and Z is two issues here. It doesn't sound like code enforcement was involved, it should have been. Because if they're backing out of a blind spot, that's a safety issue that will be addressed. And then secondly, not everybody was notified, so right there, it's invalid. This needs to go back to P and Z.
So they need to change the file for a new hearing?
I think, well, I don't know if we should pay for it, but I think this should come up again. come up again to P and Z for...
Well, every time there's a hearing, for a public hearing, we got to pay for it.
We have to pay for it, but this is not their problem. If we...
Well, it is if they were notified in advance and they still didn't respond to the notifications.
Oh, they were notified in advance and didn't respond. The Mohans?
I tried to tell them to report twice, yes.
Then I reject it and send it back to them recently, because in my opinion, they have not followed the proper procedure.
I'm referring to the P and Z members, especially in council, because...
It should have gone out P and Z.
And that's why I'm actually surprised that you even got a favor.
And just for clarification, trustee Olson, not to cut you off by any means, it did go through the building department, through the code enforcement, and it was given to me as I oversee that department for some follow-up.
So you screwed it up?
I did not screw it up. I notified it. This was not called upon during the meeting. I can only be here...
Great, may Patrick, anybody.
That's what grinds. I thought it was John Dear Barry's getting ready to write.
Seriously, seriously, I don't think they followed the proper process. People have not been notified, and we owe it to the entire citizenry to follow the process.
Especially the one right next door.
Well...
I believe there is an allowance, just because of the concern that superintendent could zelver up, I think there is an allowance for a front yard fence that's like a picket fence, it's three feet or less or something like that. So depending on the function of what this person's trying to do, they would perhaps be able to do a shorter fence that wouldn't be a blind spot.
And you were actually correct, although that's fighting dandy, but it's still not...
From a procedural point of view, they didn't follow the procedure, which is get approval, get the notification. If you weren't notified, then I don't think it's appropriate for us to follow, for sure.
We shouldn't assume anything on behalf of the people that should have been notified more.
I certainly don't think it's fair.
I believe, Mayor, then, if the board wishes, we need a motion to deny the variance at this time and refer it to P and Z for further consideration.
Yeah, I take that motion.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Please.
Are we going to put something in there to tell what we'd like to see?
We got one of the P and Z members here, so I'll make sure that they get that. That's me.
If you'll allow me, no, I'll attend to P and Z meeting.
Don't know when it'll be, but we could, well, actually, the meeting next Wednesday. I don't know that that topic will come up, but, Michelle, can you put it on the agenda for a point of discussion so they're aware of the situation, please? All right, so I'll entertain a motion to send the...
Move by Olson, second and great.
To deny the...
To deny and send it back to P and Z.
For further consideration.
All right. Broke up, please.
Trustee Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
The next item on here for the attorney's report has to do with Blue Beacon International. Heard at the P and Z meeting, they had a little bit of difficulty contacting one of the neighboring property owners. They did their best. In this case, it's a little bit different, I think. I believe you did send notes to the trust. There's an adjacent property that is in trust limbo because of the way the banking industry has become in our state. But there was also some discussion pertaining to the, we've all just been having this very intense dialogue pertaining to the cost of roads and everything else. They happen to be in a particular business model where they, as much as they grow and increase traffic, people are happy for their success, there's also an increased demand of burden put on the roads right there in front of the property. The most obvious has to do with the, during the wintertime, when the trucks are coming out of there, they're not being dried, which we wouldn't expect, but, you know, as the water shakes off the trucks after they're being washed down, you know, that comes out on the street and it ends up icing, especially in this time of the year. So we had a discussion, Mr. Johnson and myself, from Salina, Kansas, is where you go through your company, is based out of...
What?
Salina?
Salina.
Salina, thank you.
For the record, I graduated in Salina High School, Salina, Kansas, 19 something or other, and also went to the School of Kansas Western University of South Kansas.
Anyhow.
Go your own.
Most things.
Anyhow, so there's been some discussion between Blue Beacon and the village pertaining to finding a way to help us with our cost of the burden on our public works department as it pertains to dealing with the roads and water constantly saturating there, possibly causing more upheaval over time as the water seeps into the asphalt and everything. At this point, what he's asking for, because we want to have an ongoing dialogue to try to find a way to remedy that, he's asking for, there's a total of four issues that they're requesting in their variance, and that had to do with the expansion of the employee parking, and that was item number one. There is three other items that had to do with the expansion of the driveway, the 24 feet from the front edge on the property line for their office space, and finally, a third, the next item would be an additional bait for increased ability to serve the truck population, if you will, over time. And what he's asking for at this time, because he wants to try to figure out with corporate how to deal with this, he can't make a decision on certain things, so at this time, he's asking simply for an approval on the first item to increase or to actually implement an employee parking area, which is partly a creation of a third driveway, which is kind of an anomaly, but because of the way that, if you understand, a U-shaped driveway for the trucks and down the middle that they want to have an employee parking, frankly, it's a bit of a safety issue for his employees, and I think it's a reasonable request. So the other items, he's offering to simply table those so he doesn't have to go for another P and Z hearing, but table those until we can figure something out with corporate pertaining to what we're identifying as like a 2% transaction fee of some sort, that they've just got to figure out what's the correct mechanism to do that. We've got two options on how we go about doing that. We can either table those last three items, or we could go ahead and build it into the ordinance where it allows for those last three items contingent on the, that way you wouldn't even have to come back if everything worked out fine with corporate on that. You want us to go ahead and create the first, allow for the first one without any conditions and the other three based on, I'm just for the motion to the board?
I think our preference would be to keep it clean, just do the one now...
Sure.
And then come back and do what we need to do the second.
That'll be fine.
I think it'd be worth another trip later.
Okay. So Larry, do you want to make the recommendation for the...
Yes, sir. With the gentleman's request, we need an ordinance approving the issuance of a variance filed on behalf of Blue Beacon International with respect to the expansion of the employee parking lot. At this time, the other matters will be tabled for further review. This ordinance will just contain to the employee parking expansion.
So we're basically striking two, three, four?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Second. Olson, great.
Broke up, please.
That would be ordinance 1707.
Sure.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Olson?
I was born in Kansas.
Born?
Yes, yes.
So far.
And Pop?
Yes.
Yes.
Just for section for this then, so for section two for the variance, we're just taking out...
Strike in two, three, four. And because he's already had the hearing from P and Z, when those get brought up in the future, we just need to make a note that, not within the ordinance itself, I don't think they're doing.
Wait, well, this one is only number three. Yeah, so we're only approving three.
Sir, did I have my order?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I knew what you were saying. Three. I was just trying to ask, give it possible. I could say...
You're trying to pick a lesson, so...
I'll say it to you later.
All right, so basically, the portion that allows for the expansion of the employee parking?
Yes.
Fine.
Thank you, Mayor.
And then you'll have that amended and then...
The next item is the ordinance modifying the issuance of a non-recourse replacement tax increment redevelopment of the High Street Real Estate Fund. We've talked about this on maybe two or three different occasions. Mayor would like to be hit back, but she's pretty, no. The ordinance, basically, what we're doing is modifying the previous note that was issued on behalf of this project. The terms are basically set forth in section two. We pick the highlights of the 80% pledge. The replacement note will not bear any interest and any prior interests shall be waived. The principal model of note shall be increased to cover all eligible costs, including tenant repairs. The future project costs will be driven out to the village authorities for further review. Maturity date shall be amended to 20, I'm sorry, December 31st, 2026, and they can assign this note to certain individuals. The one part I want to make sure the board's aware of, I did delete section three on the year division, I believe, because we're not issuing a new note. All we're doing is changing the terms of the previous note. So it doesn't affect us per se. There's only one note outstanding. This would be the modification of the note. They will pay us pursuant to, I believe, section three, $350,000 for improvements that we deem necessary. The note will mature on three certain conditions, and we talked about payment of all monies during this note, the expiration of current First Amendment tax increment finance district, or upon December 31st, 2026.
I thought there was, that was very blue, that one needs to be clarified for me, that I thought there was wording in there at one point having to do with, or sooner if it's determined that the...
I have whichever under that. It says the redevelopment note shall become null and void and have no further effect upon any following occurrences or whatever comes first.
Where's that language at?
I think it's on your section...
Your section three?
One second.
If I may, you're on your desk when you came in, you had a revised K3 in the upper corner, it should say revised 1210, and under that, it would be section three, maturity date is where you would be looking at.
But that's, we just wouldn't...
No, he changed that out, he said, so if you're looking at the one, I never say no.
So it says the expiration of the current First Amendment noting tax increment by day three, or on December 31st, 2026.
Because there's still some debate, if you will, legally, as to does it expire with the original date of the TIF expiration, or does it expire, you know?
I believe, your honor, just for clarification purposes, I did talk to Ms. Riden about the situation. They're willing to take the chance. They believe it's 2026. If they get paid prior to that, full amount, if the, as the mayor indicated, if the TIF expires prior to that, or, let's see, if they get paid prior to that, the TIF expires, or December 31st, 2026, whatever comes first, the note's null and void.
All right, so clarification on here, Larry, on item section two E, which is on line 74.
Mm-hmm.
If that date, expiration date is in question, and we need to have alternate wording there to keep us from amending it to a date that we can't...
I believe it's covering the maturity date.
Well, you're defining the maturity date as now December 31st, 2026, but could it be in 2024? Because...
Well, the item, item number two says expiration of current First Amendment multi-tax...
So if it comes in December 2024, it covers it.
Right.
Whichever comes first.
That's behind the two, sorry.
Correct, but we are stipulating a new maturity date specifically in section two, item E.
So expiration of the current First Amendment TIF or December 31st, 2026?
When the note's paid in full, whichever comes first.
I understand, I just want to make sure that when we're stipulating, we're saying the maturity date is 2026, if we legally don't have a basis to do that, I don't know.
Well, it is, your honor. Section two says this is how the note's going to be modified. So the note's going to say 80%, bear no interest, we increase it to cover the cost, future costs got to be presented to the board. So what we're saying, basically, that note that was issued back in 2005, it's going to be modified to show the same. Then what we're saying under the next section, maturity date, in the event determined that it's not 2026, before that, the note's null and void.
Right.
Which they get paid in full, which at this point in time...
Not likely.
Yeah, exactly. And then they'll pay us the 350...
Upon signature, that become effective. This doesn't become effective until it's...
I would say within the next, I probably want to give off the books, but then next, hopefully by the end of this fiscal year.
But they're waiving, item section two B, just so it raises the word, they're waiving all prior interest accrued as well.
That's item C.
Yeah, they're waiving interest plus any future interest.
Sure.
So they're banking on getting a tenant in there or selling it.
What's the, what is the current estimated approximate interest home that's being saved?
Yeah, it was 7% back then.
Give or take $100,000.
I would say close to $4 or $5 million.
Exactly, and that's what my point, I want to point out that in doing this, where the village is being saved $4 to $5 million, which unfortunately can't be used to improve roads, but can be used to potentially, we don't know, that's correct, it can be used to fund further economic development down the road.
Great.
Great job of negotiating.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the ordinance. Send it to the motion.
Second.
Gonzalez and Gray, ordinance center?
1708.
Discussion?
Please.
I will vote yes, but in full disclosure, I work for the company that is in this building currently.
But not in relation to...
But I have no relationship with the owners, I have no business interest.
Great. Broke up, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Gray?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
And Pop?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is the ordinance for improvement of tax levy. We tabled this from the previous board meeting. This ordinance is asked to be approved and adopted and filed with the county by, I believe, the last Tuesday of this month, for the fiscal year of May 1st, 2014 to April 30th, 2015. It sets forth the amount appropriated tax levy and the difference or views appropriate for the board review and consideration.
I'll entertain a motion.
Double.
Second.
Yes.
What is the percent increase?
It's less than 5%.
4.99.
I know it's less than 5%, is it, is that what it is?
It's about 4.99.
All right, roll call, please.
We don't have an ordinance yet.
I'm sorry.
Seventeen oh eight. You don't have any?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Justine Gray?
Yes.
Justine Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is an ordinance approving, sorry, that's approving the ordinance abating the 2014 taxes on the general obligation bond series 2005. You have to approve and adopt these each and every year, otherwise you may go on debt bill. There's enough money in the designated fund to pay the debt service, therefore you can abate these taxes.
So this saves money?
Pardon me?
This saves money?
Yes, sir.
That's a good thing.
Yes, sir.
I move.
Thank you.
Make a motion.
You guys can have the next one.
Holston and Pop? No, you're pointing against me for again.
I've been checking the date for-
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Seventeen ten.
That's K five, correct?
Roll call.
Justine Holston?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Next item for the board's consideration is an approval of an ordinance abating the 2014 taxes on the general obligation bond series 2009. Same scenario, this is for a different year. Once again, this has to be approved and adopted and filed with the county clerk.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Gonzalez and Gray?
Seventeen eleven.
Okay. Roll call.
Justine Horn?
Yes.
Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
And Holston?
Yes.
Before we go to the next one, if I could, Darrell, I believe the next one is also the one that's affected to the TIF district? And that's the reason why, if you look real closely, there's a section in there that's different than the other two preceding ordinances? Partly because the TIF funds are helping offset some of that.
The last one, Your Honor, would be an approval of an ordinance abating the 2014 taxes on the general obligation bond series 2010. As the mayor indicated, they're abating a portion of these taxes for said year in the amount of $86,550, leaving an amount to be extended in the amount of $185,092.50.
Extend it next year?
For the, for the tax year for 2014.
So leaving the amount of $185 to be extended, when's it extended to?
I believe the money from the TIF will pay for that part, for the TIF, from the TIF district. It does no effect on the taxpayers per se, the TIF has the funds to pay that.
It's just a geo-backed TIF district.
Exactly.
Motion?
Philip? Second.
Holston and Pop? Ordinance number?
Seventeen twelve.
Roll call, please.
Justine Pop?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yes.
And Horn?
Yes.
Thank you. Under old business, we have the landlord license. I've got nothing.
There's nothing in our packet?
I know, this is just a kind of a continuation of that.
I'll try to put something together on that to announce January, possess something in January. I have, the board did receive copies several months ago. Hopefully you have read through them. If you have any comments, please send me an email, and then I'll, unless I hear changes, probably submit. But we looked at the last time, they have a recommendation, based upon staff recommendations.
All right, at this time, we have open to the public, non-adjourned items. Please don't make your comments to three minutes, come to the podium, give your name and address.
My name is Vicki Werch, and I represent the Roman funeral home that's located at 5450 Wilson. We're in the process of trying to extend our parking lot, because we've been told by several people that our parking lot's big enough where we have waste. But we have been having issues with people telling us that we have water, that every time it rains, our parking lot floods out. The guy north of us, who's an auto repair shop, which is kind of hard to believe, because my asphalt person was out there and gave me a quote, and he said that water cannot jump a curb to get into his parking lot. So we've been hearing a lot about it, we heard from Carol here about it, saying that there's water all the time that's coming off our parking lot and the hens. We've been hearing it from different people. Matter of fact, Jeff from Tyson had told us there might be a water issue, which is what he's talking about is the water thing. What I'm trying to do is clear up the water issue today, so I can move forward to getting my parking lot expanded, because it keeps coming to our attention that when it rains, he keeps getting flooded out, and I don't understand how it's our problem that he's got, he's got water. And I've taken several pictures of his parking lot, he's got more downsides that's coming into his parking lot, and his gutters are overflowing, he's got puddles everywhere, he's jumping our curb to come through our, and we've never really complained about him. I mean, we've always, we get rocks, we sweep it every week, we've never had a problem, but he's always complaining to us about the water. And I just want that water situation to be taken care of before I can move on to getting my parking lot expanded. So I don't, I'm just bringing it to your attention, because then our next step is to make this parking lot bigger. I just don't want this water issue to hold me back, because Jeff Tyson, Jeff from Tyson or engineering is telling us he could, and I don't want it to. So I don't know what you can do to help me on it, but I wanted to bring this to somebody's attention, so we can get rid of it once and for all.
Well, today's the first time I've heard about it.
Right, well, I was told that he's complained to the village several times.
Well, just so you understand, today's the first time I've heard about it, and Jeff is here, and we could ask him for some perspective on that.
Sure. And I've even talked to Carol, and Carol even said, when I dropped off the plot of survey, she goes, well, you know, there might be a water issue. And I'm like, what's with this water issue? So, and the curb that we have around our funeral home is like this high between before his parking lot. And everybody said the water just does not jump a curb. We have designed, according to what you guys told us when we built it, that the water follows the park, the curb, and it goes all the way to the back of the parking lot, and there's a gully that it goes down and goes out. So there's really no water going into his parking lot.
Well, there's two things, to the best of my knowledge, without knowing the specifics, and I'm sure you could use more parking.
Yes.
The biggest issue has to do with whether it's affecting one neighboring property owner or not. Commercial property is, you get requirements to make sure that stormwater is being managed effectively, either through a detention area, retention area, proper, you know, channeling off the property to, you know, with certain flow rates and everything in that regard. That's about the extent of my insight into that. And whether it affects one property owner to the adjacent side of you or not is a point of relevance, but that is not a pivotal aspect of what you're doing, what needs to be done for your property to make sure it's being addressed within the realm that it can.
Yeah, I mean, I even had my engineer come out, matter of fact, last Wednesday, and he investigated the whole thing, and he said the water is exactly the way it was supposed to be set up, and we built it, it was all there, it all shoots all the way in the back, it's, I mean, the drainage is there, everything is the way it was, you know, was agreed upon when we built it back in 2007, and nothing has really changed at all.
Right.
So I don't understand why this water issue keeps coming up with us.
Well, like I said, I'm hearing about it today.
Right.
But, you know, I'll defer my superintendent, if I can, to some input, but this is really something even, you bring it to the board, which is fine, practically speaking, you know, it's going to go through the channels internally, and, you know, it's perfectly fine that you can present it to the board, but it's, also it's going to go through the channels, which at this point would be our superintendent, and he'll lean upon engineering services as deemed necessary to make sure that we adhere to our code and that your property's being maintained and managed in a neighborly way, if that's a, if that's a concern.
Right.
So that will be addressed to the building department. Right now, we're a little short-staffed, but our superintendent's overseeing that area.
Right, because I got to talking to Carol, and I know I have several messages for this gentleman, he never called me back, but I had to go through him to go to Carol, which was an issue too, that's how it all started.
Sure.
So, but I just wanted to try to bring it to somebody's attention, so I can have a beginning point of where to go with this, so I can get it taken care of.
Yeah, and I'll simply defer the superintendent and allow him to deal with you offline if it's necessary to get it moving forward. If you're not getting any results that are appropriate, he'll keep you in the loop now, keep the board involved, but it's also, I might get, I might get intervened when I know my department is doing their job.
Okay.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
You say your engineering company, did they do a study, did you say?
That's what he's doing, yes.
So they have a written report?
I don't have it as of yet, I just met with him last week.
Nice to give that to David Marcel.
Well, I was hoping to give it to Jeff at Tyson.
Okay.
Just for procedural clarification, whenever you add more impervious surface to a lot, you have to have a stormwater plan. That's what I believe you're in the process of supplying to our engineer, who said you're adding a parking lot, we need to have a place to put the stormwater. We do already have an issue there, we'll talk offline about the issue. We understand it doesn't jump curves, but there's another issue that, we can talk offline about that, as to where that water's coming from. I believe you have a basement?
No.
No basement, no sump or anything in there? Okay, we'll talk offline about it. So we'll talk offline about that, where the water comes from.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
And I would add that, you know, I've been to several funerals over there, and I absolutely agree there is a parking problem over there. If you get any kind of attendance there at all, you have to park on the street, literally around the street, and during inclement weather, that's a major hindrance, so I can't see the reason why the village wouldn't want to be interested in helping you to do something that would give you good parking and at the same time, give us the drainage we need to protect everybody.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for, from the public? Okay. I don't believe we have any reason to go to executive session. And time is now eight nineteen, I don't see the motion to adjourn.
Next B, would you descend?
Twenty foot.
Will we adjourn?
Hold on just a second. Would it be free to have? I know we tentatively, back in October, we tentatively decided it would be the- Twenty second? Tuesday, is that the same night you're having the joint review?
Correct.
I believe it would be okay to schedule a special meeting to, and the other thing we may be dealing with there, we could have simplified more like we tried to do the last one, where we just deal with the consent agenda, which deals with budgetary issues, as well as, again, depending on the next weight, so if there's something that needs to be addressed there, we need board approval, and just try to keep it simple.
Is that the twenty second?
I don't think they'll be back for that.
Twenty second's a Monday, though, correct?
It's a Monday.
We had talked about Tuesday, I thought the twenty third.
You want to make it the same as the, so we're not, and staff stayed late multiple times, it's fine with me.
Third, that.
Actually, I probably have something on the twenty second.
It is the twenty third, Tuesday.
It is the twenty third?
Is that what we're paying? Very closely for the, I don't remember the board. I guess, I mean, it makes more sense to be-
The chairman's view board, Your Honor, should take ten minutes. Yeah, please.
So let's have the joint review board at six, and then regular meeting at six thirty, and do it on the twenty third. And hopefully that'll take ten minutes.
November twenty second.
I think we talked about the twenty third.
Can we do that? Do you have a care for the joint review board, too? Just make that six, and ours at six thirty. I think in the past, we said the joint review board meeting during the day. It's fine. Whatever you guys want to do, that's fine, so.
Can we have the joint review board at six thirty and our regular meeting at seven this time of day?
I don't think it'll take-
No?
No, we just had six o'clock for the joint, at six thirty for the review, but you were preoccupied, or for our special meeting.
Correct.
You were preoccupied. I meant to piece.
Okay, fine.
All that being said, I want to take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Justine Gonzalez?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Holston?
Yeah.
Horn?
Yes.